Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Stelling. Bowman.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 21st, 2022. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held June 29th, 2022. Item C, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held July 14th, 2022. Item D, approval of claims in the amount of $342,456.89 and payroll expenses of $116,680.9. And item E, approval of payment for invoice 463-4908 for $29,826.12 and invoice 464-2904 for $34,993.1 to ASAP Energy, and that is Airport Fury.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I was in a motion. I was in ask questions about Dean.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions?
Is that, it seems like it was in a new format specifically. Is that the Crawford?
Yes, that's straight out of N code. So the finance committee last month when they joined, when Jennifer joined us for the meeting, she asked if it would be okay to pull that report straight from N code instead of reformatting it for the purposes of this reporting. Finance committee was fine with that. It's actually, it'll save us some money. We paid her by the hour to, you know, put all that together. And she said it takes two or three hours to pull it out of N code, put it in a new format, and then make sure everything's right. This has come straight from the system.
Okay. I actually, I really like the format. It seems like a lot more detailed oriented. I just, I assure, I assume it's just because of my own ignorance, but I didn't know the overage budgeted items and then the Y column and then I guess that negative mark that indicates them. I didn't know how that kind of, well, to me reading that, I didn't know if that was that line item with the overage for that budget of the year, or am I just misreading that?
What page?
Let me look at a specific one. I'd say most of the page starting on 41 had at least some Y of some amount. A specific one, here we'll go with, if you can find line item 85-558-225.
It's probably, it's just that over budget category is that because in those particular categories, they were over budget. That's not to say that they weren't under budget in other categories. The under budget items aren't, well, everything else is under budget.
Like, so they did not exceed the entire appropriation given to that department just in that particular line item?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, the group one that spurred to the right one, that indicates just that grouping of items, but not necessarily the entire budget?
I'd have to, I'd have to ask.
All right. Fair enough. I just didn't know, it seems like some of these are fairly substantial. You know what I mean? Like two or three of them I saw that were 20,000 to almost 40,000. And I know that an example of the tourism tax one, which is 15-55-303, we've had to do budget adjustments. So I just didn't know if that's kind of what we have to look at to do those, but it sounds like no, as long as they don't exceed the appropriations of that, given that department to work.
So all general fund items have to, the budget has to, the general fund has to be balanced. So we can't have more expenses than we have revenue in the general fund. In order to do that, we do have budget amendments at times. And so these, the guesses in here will tell it, will be an indication of where there may be a budget amendment if it causes a particular line to exceed the department budget. Is there any other discussion? The motion was made by Mr. Winters and seconded by Mr., excuse me, Mrs. Beer. I get called Mr. Parker all the time. Is there any further discussion? Please call to vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
I'm going to sustain.
All right. Next item is reports from staff. I do not believe there's a planning commission report. Is there a hospital authority report?
Yeah, maybe. Figure out this new funding. Okay, the operating budget for 2022 was approved. 2022, 2023 was approved. Meditech was approved as a service. A pain management clinic was meeting with the hospital on the 14th. The hospital did show an operating loss for many, but that was due to patients and activity. The billing cycle, stuff is improving. Drew Cunningham is the attorney for the board with Rick Cunningham's retirement and officers who are elected. Jason Gassford is still the chairman, Mo Hannaford, vice chairman, and Ms. Haley Simon is secretary.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg. Next item is the library board. Mr. Bell.
Fair enough. We, at the library board, we also, we, main thing we wanted to highlight is that the physical checkouts have gone way up. We have 6,890 more for this year than I think in previous years. And I think that's a big sign for the library getting more traffic in and kind of recovering back from COVID. So that's a really good uptick. I actually showed up a little bit late, so I missed some of the actual board meetings. The other thing that we had was our reports on the summer reading program, which have been very successful. I'd say just kind of eyeballing it, I'd say most of our weeks, we had about an average of 30 kids with the high being 42 and then the low, it looks like being about 19. I think we had good volunteer and participates. The library, I think I mentioned before, does the ambassador program. It looks like we've had at the height of that, about 14 kids and sometimes having 21 grownups as volunteers and different things. So I think they've seen a lot of improvement in that. And I guess on that regard, I guess the most popular day would be Lego Day. And on that regard, I wanted to extend a thank you to the people who are able to manage to donate Legos for those projects. They've seen a big uptake and they're hoping, they're excited about the amount of Legos they receive and they would happily receive more on those projects that they can do there. And the idea is that they have two plans for them. One, for the Lego Days and to set up special events. And then you can also check out those Legos internally to play with different, I think they use word, like kinetic things. So physical touch plays. So we've seen a good there, a good uptick on the programs there and kind of just talking through the library matters. It's a nice oasis, especially during this hot days to have children to be able to play in the library and stuff, especially during, you know, even without the pool. So it's been a good thing there. They've also looked at, they are continuing and they have an OHAI, which basically sounds to me like a senior citizens can come there and kind of like a workout program for them, basically to work on balance and stuff like that. And they have that program. They're looking at continuing that and they hope to bring back, they used to do apparently a Tai Chi program for them. And that's, that's hopefully going to be back in the works, they mentioned there. Another thing that they're excited about, we looked at, I think they looked at not maybe last year, not the year before, offering something called Brain Fuse. But luckily, the state of Oklahoma, through the Department of Libraries, is offering that program for free. And that's another thing the library is pretty excited about. That is an online program that if you go to the library's, library's website, they can link to it. It offers free classes and tuition so that if the conversation kind of, if you're in class and you're, I think, high school age and younger can do this in the way that if you need tutoring on a subject and you're afraid to ask your teacher or somebody you know, you can go through this program and they do online Zoom classrooms where you can be in a group of people and then you can invite other instructors to kind of talk and partner with you there. It also offers resume building and it can also, it's a good place for, to learn about veterans benefits. And so it's kind of just a program offered through that and it's called Brain Fuse and it's a free program. I think the paper is going to publish something about it later. Oh, the other big thing is that the library is going to have their August book sale starting on the eighth of Monday and going to the 20th of Saturday. They hope to start it on the sixth, but they're only open for a day or two, so I think they'll push it to the Monday there. So we're also looking for donations of books and stuff to kind of raise that. So if you have any books out there, I know that we have, gosh, we have a few programs around town where you can donate your books and stuff like that. So if you have any extras, the library would happily be able to take them and raise them for that fundraiser. The library director wanted to make sure to thank their staff. They have kind of taken in some in-house cleaning and stuff for the library and the staff has and they, the director feels like they've done an exceptional job and she's really proud of them of that. I think the final thing that I'll leave you with is that the library, I think is part of the summer pre, the, the summer program they have, they are going to do a rocket launch Monday, July 25th at 11:45, I think at Washington Schools. And so if you guys are out there and you want to see some rockets, I'd, I'd stop by. Apparently they've had to move it outside because last year, some of the rockets got so high they kept the ceiling. So they need some room there. But it was a good report and I think the library is doing well and it sounds like we're getting back on step from our program and stuff from closing of COVID, which hopefully it stays that way. But any questions?
Thank you, Taylor. Next item is the Outlaw Arena Authority Report. I don't believe we have a report from them. Hadn't met, yeah, that's what I thought. So we'll go to item E is the Outlaw Tourism Tax Commission. Mr. Martin.
I don't think reported on our last meeting, then falls on my head or something.
They meet this week. That's right. We just talked about that. Thank you. So item F is the Board of Adjustments and they have not met. And so we'll go to the Alba Regional Airport Commission. I was not able to attend in person, so I didn't have, I didn't contribute to their quorum or anything, but they did have, there's an item on our agenda which we'll get to in a little bit. And they did hear from their engineer regarding capital improvement plans and some potential increase in federal funding and state funding for different airport programs. Happy to try and answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you. The next item is Recreation Complex Board.
We didn't have a meeting yet.
Okay. And then the cemetery board met last week on the 14th. I was not in attendance and Mr. Reed's not here, so we'll table that report. Mr. Martin, do you have a finance committee report?
Yes. Pretty routine meeting. Jennifer with Crawford and Associates joined us. The, we discussed CDs renewing. Just had general discussion on, you know, what's going on in the last month. Majority of the discussion, I guess, be CDs renewing and Trent Goss was there with us also. Some quick numbers here for you. Cash balances for City of Alva cash counts is at $2,592,000 and change. And investments totaled $1,621,000 and change. The overview across major funds, city collected at the close, this is for the close of June 30th, 2022. City collected 98.6% of budgeted revenue, expended 91.4% of budgeted expenses. Sales tax. Report, sales and use tax totaled $394,618. This is up 8.2% from May 2021 and up 1.34% from May 2022. Sales tax, sales and use taxes at 95% of 2122 budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you. Next item is the mayor's report. Since I made copies of my agenda, I guess you guys have my notes. I did want to let you guys know that the paychecks conversion is almost, I'd say 97, 99% complete. We have had our first payroll through the system. There were very few issues really. It all went pretty well. The, there were some deductions for health insurance that didn't come out of some checks and there was some incentives that didn't get paid on others. But overall, the, the difference was pretty small and it'll all be taken care of on the next pay period. I will let you know that if you saw in the finance reports or the claims report, so I can't tell you what page it's on. I know there's an item in there that it says NextUp termination. And so that was the previous HR payroll company. And that amount of money is being disputed. We feel like we have adhered to the terms of the agreement and are in terminating our agreement with NextUp and therefore there should be no termination fees. So we are pursuing legal action to recover that. If it is determined that we are not in compliance and we do owe that recovery, paychecks will pay that. They've agreed to take care of any termination fees that we may have.
Does that include the legal fees to fight the?
If, if we get to recover it, it will include our legal fees. But it's roughly 20 grand or more, I think. So we want to get that. We have been working with Porterfield surveyors. They do property surveying. There's some property down by Wheeler Brothers down on Choctaw that, or near, not Choctaw, down by the grain elevators that used to be railroad property that when the railroad abandoned that property, it became City of Alva's property. Wheeler Brothers is interested in purchasing that. We've had the property surveyed for, you know, where the property lines need to be and what's the cities and, you know, and all of that. And we're going back through and determining the process for declaring that surplus. We're, we're having to determine if there were any easements or restrictions on the use of that property in order to, to be able to declare a surplus and make it available for sale. Of course, we can't just sell it to Wheeler Brothers. We'll have to sell it via, you know, sealed product or public auction or something like that. But we are trying to make that property available. I have, I have the minutes from the, or the ordinance, the handwritten ordinance from July 5th, 1901, where we signed the ordinance with Choctaw, what is it called? Hold on. Choctaw Northern Railroad to grant them the, that property and that if it were to ever come, become not the, the use of the railroad, that it would revert back to the city. I just had to find if there's any other documentation when that, if, I need to find the documentation when that went back to being city property instead of the, yeah. Kind of amazing. Actually, Brian Miller found this. Well, he had it. I don't know if he found it or not. He had it. So I got it from him. But ordinance number 26 for the City of Alva, July 5th, 1901, published in the Alva Pioneer. That's really, I just thought it was cool report. I apologize if I might be the only one, but. I did have the opportunity to meet Woods County Economic Development's, new economic development director, Jeremy Zeller. He and I got to spend a couple hours together this afternoon. I gave him a tour of town and he got to hear some of his, you know, you know, thoughts on, you know, economic development, what he viewed as opportunities for the community and so, and he got to see some things he hadn't seen yet. So he's relatively new here. If you get a chance to, to meet him, he's officed out at Northwest Tech and he is, you know, working on economic development for us. The 522 agreement, I've sent that with revisions to Drew for final markup, getting it in format that we can prove and then send it off to the 522 board for their approval. That's really all we lack, lack there. I hope that the EMS district, the 522 board will approve that. I have discussed the, the changes with their leadership and I do think that they're okay with them. But when we get that, I've got a copy of that if anybody wants to see it somewhere. Catch me after a meeting and I'll give you a copy of what we, what we sent to the attorney. We do have an agreement in place with SQSS and that stands for Strategic Quality System and Support. It's a web-based, essentially task management accountability system. It's going to allow us to, to make assignments to any of the employees within the city and we'll be able to track whether or not they complete those assignments and use that for, number one, staying on task and completing projects. But number two, if that doesn't happen, we'll be able to use that system for accountability and performance appraisal. So that's, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be up and running with that. I did want to just, in case you didn't see the email, the Oklahoma Municipal Conference is coming up in September. If you are wanting to attend, please let me know so we can make our reservations. That will be in Tulsa this year. And then when you arrived, there was a letter in front of your seat and that is from our grant writer. She is preparing our grant proposal for the Land and Water Conservation Fund and has asked that if this is a, if this effort to remodel the pool is something that you support, would you please sign that, leave it with me and we will include that letter in our application. It's, it's been busy. I would be remiss if I didn't say that the staff are doing a, a great job. Heather, Maddie, Shelley in the office are really keeping some things going that, you know, I may not be as familiar with in process. And so they, they know what's going on. They're doing a good job and, you know, all the departments, I think, are working pretty hard right now. That concludes my report. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
The SQS system, is that something that we already have or something that we're looking at implementing from a startup?
We are getting it.
Just out of curiosity, how, how well does it integrate with like other organizational apps like Outlook? Because I think the office uses Office 365.
It's, it's web-based and you can put links and attachments from any system into it.
I meant like, it sounds like it is a software that gives you the ability to sign like time-based projects, like a meeting at this time to discuss this, or am I?
It'll email out reminders.
Okay. I didn't.
So you get an email.
If it do, okay. I didn't know if it integrated.
Yep.
Fair enough. Sounds like a good system.
It, it's a good system. Heather can't wait. All right. We do not have the business manager's report, so we'll go to item number seven, which is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Anybody that would care to make a comment to the council, you may step up, if you're able, step to the center, to the podium. Please tell us your name and we will give you two minutes to address the council. My timekeeper's not here. Anybody volunteer to keep the time for me?
I can do it for you.
Thanks, Dana.
I'm James Weebener. I'm the current leaseholder on, or the, the previous leaseholder on the airport ground. My comments have to do with that. My opinion through the negligence of the City of Alva and/or the airport board, the notice bid was not put in the paper in a timely manner. The bids were opened June 3rd. I had the high bid. At that point, under good faith, I thought I had the high bid and would have the continuation of the lease. I was never given a notice to quit. I've never been, I've never been contacted that I don't have the, the lease anymore. With that being said, I, in good faith, started working the ground thinking I had the high bid and had the lease. Since then, I found out through the paper that I do not have the high, or do not have the bid. With that being said, I've invested a substantial amount of money in the land already and I would like to know how I will be reimbursed for that. Addressing the allegations against my poor farming, I, rumors have been said that I have not properly fertilized, I have not properly applied weed killer. I can prove that I've done both. I've been a good steward of the land. This year has been the most challenging year that my dad, who is 97 years old, he's ever seen. This is not a year to judge someone's farming because I've done everything I should have done. I applied weed killer. I fertilized. I worked the ground late. I planted late in hopes to control the joint grass. That's one of the things that I have heard through rumors as an issue. I was never contacted to say, hey, there's been complaints.
Thank you, Mr. Weebner.
I give my two minutes to my husband.
Any objection?
Whatever, that's fine.
And if anybody would have approached me and asked me, I could have told them the plan I already had in place. I'd already talked to the appropriate people at Wheeler Brothers, what my plans were and had the chemicals on hand and what, what my plans were. But I was never contacted about these complaints. I don't know whether they're actual complaints. Are they complaints that have been entered into any official meetings, any official notes? And if they were, why was I not contacted? Why am I have to, why am I here defending myself against, it seems, it smacks of backroom collusion to get my bid to be rejected. Can't be collusion in the bidding process, but it seems like there was collusion to knock me out of the bidding process. Is it personal? Is it against something I've said in the past? I don't know. But I've worked really hard at that. I, I've worked hard on that, the airport ground. This year was challenging and this is what I'm being judged on. Nobody has said anything to me. I reiterate, nobody's ever said anything to me about any complaints. Don't know. Thank you. Oh, one, one thing. I do have a bill for the work I have been done. Who would I present that to?
That'll be probably something that you would need to discuss with your attorney if you feel like there's a claim to be made.
I have and he says there is. Are you saying that I have done the work and?
I'm not saying you've done anything. I'm saying that that's not a decision for this council. This, and this is not an item we can discuss. We do have an agenda item to discuss the awarding of a bid, but we can't discuss your claim.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I'm John Weebner. I'm related to James. I was a bidder on this airport ground. I put in a bid that, looking at input costs and everything was a realistic bid, knowing that I would not get it. So I was, I don't really have a dog in the fight. What I do have a dog in the fight is that on social media, Alva rants, there's certain people that are posting false and malicious lies. And one of them is that complaints were only just made at the airport board meeting by one of the other bidders who did not get the bid. I have talked with Dale Logg. the bid. I have talked with Dale Loggins, who's the board chairman, and asked him if any of the bidders ever addressed anything about the airport lease with him, and he said no. I said, did I ever try to influence the bid? He said no. So, there are lies being put out here trying to win over public sentiment on social media with no recourse that are lying. And that's where I take offense, that there are lies being spread about the complaints and stuff. And there was never, and there was a retraction by the paper, never any comments by the bidders about the farming process. Because if we're bidding, we do not get to influence the bidding process. That's what I have to say. I have watched that ground for a lot of years and I think the airport board made a correct decision for the benefit of the land, not the $300 extra they would get. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Thank you all. Item eight is discussion in action to approve Airport Budget Amendment Resolution 2022-020. This resolution is to account for two things, over budget revenue and over budget expenses. The over budget revenue is for oil and gas lease, so we have revenue that was more than what we anticipated. And then, the over budget aviation fuel. When we make the amendment to both the revenue side and the expense side, it is a net neutral resolution, but it gets us in compliance with our budgeting laws. So, that is what Resolution 2022-020 is. Are there any questions? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Airport Budget Amendment Resolution 2022-020.
One second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wiedner, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2022-020. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Wiedner?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item nine is discussion in action to approve Street Department Budget Adjustment Resolution 2022-021. This budget amendment is with regard to the street and alley fund in particular, also having over budgeted revenue as well as over budgeted expenses. So, the expenses were in the form of capital outlay and infrastructure expenses, which primarily out here on Fourth Street, going over budget on what we, but going over budget for the capital outlay portion of the street fund budget. Those, those expenses be offset by a combination of two revenues and part of a fund balance. But our motor vehicle tax and street maintenance fees, both of those revenue items came in higher than what was projected. And so, that made up a little bit of that overage on the expense budget. And then, the rest of that expense budget can be made right with the transfer from the street and alley fund balance, which was in place prior to the fiscal year. So, those are the items that, that make up that budget amendment. It does reduce the street and alley fund balance on our balance I would entertain questions or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-021.
One second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wiedner, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2022-021. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Wiedner?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Item 10 is discussion in action on the E911 dispatch resolution 2022-022. This is, we have an agreement with Woods County to do dispatch for the city of Alva. So, that's everything from dispatching law enforcement to fire EMS. And this has been in place for a number of years. Nothing has changed with the agreement except the dates.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-022.
One second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wiedner, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2022-022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Wiedner?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 11 is discussion in action to approve the Alva Airport Commission recommendation of Kelly and Kelly Theising as the highest best bid for the airport farm ground lease. Like I said, I was not at the meeting. I did attend over speakerphone. I did explain to the airport commission their obligation to award the highest and best bid. And after discussion, they are recommending approval of Kelly and Kelly Theising's bid of, it ended up being $36,685.40 a year. That, that is the airport board's recommendation. And they are expressing that the number of complaints that they received when Theisings had previously, they did not receive complaints when Theisings had previously held the ground, and that they have received complaints with the Wiedners since they've held the ground. Did they pass those complaints on to the Wiedners though, or... I don't know if they did or not.
Do they document the complaints?
The complaints...
Are they like officially documented though?
There is not a file for that.
What is the lease period on the property?
The lease period was up June 30th or after the removal of the crops that were to be harvested, whichever date comes first. So, if the crops had not been harvested by June 30th, they would still have the opportunity to harvest the crop.
What was the number of complaints and specifically what were the complaints?
The complaints, I don't know the total number. The board members, I wasn't there. The board members discussed it. I couldn't hear everything they were saying. They did complain about weeds and joint grass. I did talk with airport, with one of the airport board members this afternoon, and he expressed that some of the weeds were beginning to be an issue for the airport manager and with regard to our property that we maintain.
Have these been ongoing complaints or just, like, how long is the lease?
They've been... I didn't get any notice of any of the complaints until the bidding process was started. I think I was told they've been leasing for the last three years.
And they haven't had any complaints until just now in three years?
The, I don't know what complaints they have or have not received. I don't know that, I can verify what they have or have not received either. I, the airport board, their legal obligation is not to determine how many complaints or whatever received. Their legal obligation is to choose a bidder that they feel is one to be best suited for the management of the property. Their discussion, and again, I was, it was speakerphone that I was available for, but their discussion centered around the belief that Theisings would bring more value to the airport property and in turn, the next time the lease was due for bidding, that we would see a higher return. They believe that they would see a higher return if Theisings leased it than if the Wiedners continued to lease it. That is the basis, that is a legal basis. And we just think that what, without actually having those complaints documented and on file, I don't think that they could, I don't know how they're making a best or, you know, case for, I mean, I can understand, you know, you want who's going to do the best, but you, I would think you need legal documentation on file, you know, over the last three years where you could pull it out and say, look, on this date, we had this complaint about this, and then we, you know, we talked to the leaseor and they refused to take action or something like that, you know.
Is it possible to table this item, to have the airport board furnish those complaints and kind of explain it to us at a little bit greater deal, or is this something we have to...
If y'all are worried about getting sued, we're going to get sued either way. I mean, because we have another landowner that, or a leaseor that's probably going to sue us either way. So, either they're going to sue us or Theisings are going to sue us. The airport board believes that Theisings have the best bid.
Well, I see it like this. It's a timing issue. I think a one-year lease would be very difficult to do. If we were sharecropping, I think we have complaints.
Well, it's a three-year lease.
Is it a three-year?
It's two with an option for three.
Then we have two options.
I do believe that...
Pay the man for the work he's done, or let him farm it for one more year and go from there.
Let's go for three years.
Two years with an option for the third. There's a time period where the, whoever gets the bid has to, in writing, request the third year.
And with that being once bid, we could not, without going back out for bid, change it to a one-year?
The only way to change who we accept for bid is to reject all bids and go back out for bids.
Because Mr. Wiedner was the highest bid, correct? And he has it now.
He was the highest bid by $315 a year.
And how many years has he had it so far?
Three.
This'll be your third year?
Yes, sir.
He just finished his third year.
I'll make a motion to approve the airport's recommendation of Kelly and Kelly Theising as the highest best bid for the airport farm.
I have a motion from Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
I'll make a motion to reject all bids and go out for bid.
I have a motion on the table. Is there a second? That motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll motion to reject all bids and go out for bidings for a second round.
But I'll second it. I have a motion...
But it doesn't take care of the problem.
We'll have to have a special meeting where that issue is...
Let's go through, let's go through the process here, guys. I have a motion by Mr. Dowling, a second by Mr. Brooks, to reject all bids and rebid. Now, is there any further discussion? It does not take care of the issue. The timing of this lease, any ag leases, this is poor timing to have a July, June, July 1st to June 30th ag lease. It's poor timing.
My concern is justification of best bid.
Good farming is very subjective.
By default, you know, we have always operated by default that, you know, in this case, highest wins unless there's grounds for justification, or in other ways, lowest is best unless there's grounds for justification. My concern on this situation is, is there's no grounds for justification that we can document and say, this is the case. I believe we don't solve the problem by rejecting all bids. The more appropriate solution would be to award it to the highest bidder. Otherwise, we have exposed bids at this point. You're going to have similar people going out for bid on it again, and it's still going to go to the airport board, and they're still going to go with whatever they want in that respect. I have concern with the fact that they cannot provide us with a solid grounds of those complaints that seemingly came out of nowhere. We don't have any documentation on, and I don't understand enough on the farming aspect of it to speak intelligently to that side of it. Those very well could be valuable complaints, but...
I, I don't have it written or anything like that, but I have discussed with legal counsel, both ours and with the municipal league, that they feel that the action taken has merit if that's what.
So, legal counsel is okay that there's not, we don't physically have the complaint. It's just somebody called and they, there's complaints.
Legal counsel has advised that there will be lawsuits filed against us because both parties have worked the ground at this point.
Okay.
I mean...
Without a contract.
Yeah. In my argument, there is no contract. My opinion, of course, I'm not the attorney. My opinion is neither have grounds, but there's no act of...
The highlight on this for next year, this should be coming up in February or March.
Yes.
So that there's a decision made, so that there's no confusion either way. So, everybody knows that once the crops harvested, then whoever the new person is takes over without any sort of confusion.
And they work the ground, and so, nobody's had a lawsuit fund.
So, that's a whole nother thing, but to highlight that...
Term stays the same as running through June or...
However, that needs to be amended, should be amended.
But at least they would know earlier than June that they did not receive the next year or three-year bid, besides hearing it on social media.
They need to have, the bidding needs to be done, and that's not, you're right, that's not this matter right here. The bidding does need to be completed by March probably at the latest.
It definitely has complicated and muddied this situation. Otherwise, it's, wouldn't, you know, this wouldn't be as hard of a decision, but...
I'll make a motion.
We have a standing motion. We have a standing motion.
So, your options are, and the motion that's on the table is to reject the highest bid, or reject all bids and rebid. What other motion would we entertain if this doesn't pass? I mean, other than... You've got, you've got in favor of the motion, or of the agenda item as written. You've got, you, you really can't, the way the agenda is written, you can't, you can't...
It's either that or this, but you...
You can't do it one hit. So, you either reject it, you really can't reject all bids either because that's not the item that's on the agenda. Item on the agenda is the airport board's recommendation to either approve or not. So, technically, we don't have a motion because you can't...
You can't do anything else. Either just don't pass it or...
So, you either vote against it or it dies for a lack of a second. We have a motion that never got seconded.
So, you did talk to Drew and OML legal counsel, and they both said the same thing about...
Yes, they said that we, the obligation is to take the highest best bid, and if it is believed by the airport board members that the joint grass and the weeds would be a, that would be a valid reason to say that it's not the best offer.
Was it a unanimous decision? Do you know?
There were three members voted, and they were unanimous. The other two were not present.
You're included as one of those that aren't present, right?
I'm not, I was not present.
I mean, either way, they're going to give their recommendation, I suppose. And I agree, we can't let it be rebid because that's not, everybody knows what, now at this point, what the bids were, and it's just going to be the same thing.
You know, we, we're going to, either way, we're kind of in a spot. Because we're going to get stuck with one of the bidders having, who both of them have worked up that ground. One of them's going to want us to pay their expenses. And I don't know what our obligation is. I mean, our lease is up June 30th, and that was, that was in the lease that the leasee signed. It was, and it said, whichever comes first, the crops are harvested or June 30th. And I think the crops were harvested before June 30th.
I figure it was up in July, and they're pretty late then on getting the bids out.
All right. Is there another motion? Or we're going to carry on?
Do we not have to do Taylor?
I think we had discussed that it's.
That that's we we can't reject all bids. That's not the way that that agenda is written.
Just out of curiosity, what were you going to say, Greg?
I think we ought to give this gentleman another year. If he's working, now, I didn't know about another person working the ground, but I thought if he was the only one working the ground, you got one more year in February or March, send out bids, and you start that year. It's just.
We would have to rebid that, though. That's not what the bid was based on. The bid was based on a three year term, so it would have to be rebid in that case.
All right.
We're going to have to pay somebody. Whoever worked that ground, we need to re- recoup their money for if they don't get the bid.
I would say that's up to legal counsel to determine.
As I say, we're we're not, that that's not our ours to determine. I mean, that that would be, a claim would be filed, and then responsibility would be assigned by someone other than this body.
Pretty duly of a meeting for doing this.
We'll make it up to him. All right.
I mean, there's no, I mean, at this point, there's really nothing to go. So I'll just, I'll make the motion to approve Alva Airport Commission's recommendation.
Sorry?
Connor?
Yeah, you're the first.
Have motion by Mrs. Beer, second by Mr. Martin, to approve the airport commission recommendation of Kelly Kelly Thiesing as the highest best bid for the airport far ground lease. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
No.
Dowling?
I'm staying.
Swallow?
No.
Brooks?
I'm staying.
Bowman?
No.
Okay, motion failed. Item twelve, discussion and action to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Alva for the purpose of filing for the National Park Service Land and Water Conservation Grant to renovate the bath house and associated amenities as part of the Alva Municipal Spool, Alva Municipal Pool Replacement Project, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. This is in regard to the grant application that the pool task force started and is nearing completion of that application process. The grant request is going to be for five hundred thousand dollars. This resolution says that being that the grant is a dollar for dollar matching grant, that with the funds that have already been donated, the city is in this resolution saying that we have that five hundred thousand dollar match, and that the other part of the resolution is to authorize the mayor to sign the documents. The application should be submitted next month or at the latest in September, and this is this is a requirement in order for them to to submit the grant application.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two three and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I second.
I was going to ask the question, and the grant, it outlines that the the shares of the funds to renovate the historic bath house and associated swimming pool amenities and funds for the all maintenance of the the Alva Municipal Swimming Port amenities. The way I read that is that we also have to set up fourth funds for the continued operation and maintenance of that pool, so that it takes it'll work in perpetuity. Is that, how does that work for our side? And or am I just misunderstanding that?
We are agreeing that if a pool is built, that it'll be maintained and operated.
Do we know the maintenance costs of that at this point is kind of what I was getting at?
I didn't bring that.
Okay.
But there are projections on maintenance costs.
Why? They're within realms of the reasonable budget for with which the city has and has put forth for that pool in the past?
They'll be they'll be reasonable for, yeah.
The architect has with the size has projected those for us, what you could possibly see as maintenance, because they're building their plan. They know how many gallons and how much typically chlorine and all maintenance and how many lifeguards, and they've kind of put an estimate in there, and I believe that has to be turned in with the grant.
And that's what I remember them talking about that, but I haven't seen that come back to council at this time, or had that discussion is.
It it has not, because it'll go, their projections will go with the grant.
It's not finished.
It's, yeah.
The grant application is not finished, but we got approved as to finish.
Yeah.
So are we saying we're doing, I mean, on that, are we saying that we're going to, that they're going to set the money aside for the maintenance? I mean, out of the grants and whatnot, or is it going to be coming out of the city's regular funds?
It won't come out of regular funds. We unless we negotiate something with the A D A, but or with the Parks and Recreation Commission, as we, at the last month's meeting, we moved everything from pool, parks, everything into the Parks and Recreation Commission. So the Parks and Recreation Commission would be maintaining and operating the pool.
The reality is, if we're going to build a pool, we're going to maintain it.
Yeah.
I mean, here, if we're if we're willing to build the pool, we want to build the pool. What it costs to maintain is what it costs to maintain, and we'll we'll maintain that, because why, I mean, why would we invest millions of dollars in not maintaining?
Well, my thing is, we're having trouble. I mean, we're short on money all the time, it seems like, A, we can't maintain our streets, and we've got water infrastructure that needs to maintain, and then we're going to take on something else we're going to have to maintain for that foreseeable future. So that's my that's my concern. Cool is an investment in the community. I mean, you got to give people a reason to want to be here, and if, you know, we can make our community attractive, we'll build the tax base.
No, I definitely think the pool is an asset, but, you know, I mean, when you're taking any financial venture of any size, you know, I mean, to walk into something blind is just to simply agree that you should be ignorant.
So say, hey, I I really do take offense to say it's blind after the months and years that the people have put into preparing the plan. I mean, that it's just, just more carefully choose your words, because when when they watch this video back, and those eight to ten people that have been working diligently and uncovering stones and uncovering opportunities and figuring out how to do this, I mean, it's not blindly.
I guess I was speaking from my own personal base and not necessarily reflect on any council, but when I asked, like, a projected revenue, the inability to even say, well, I think it'll cost ten percent of the perceived revenue that the the.
Mr. Brown.
Committee will have. That's what I constantly mean as blind.
I have requested that you bring questions that will require research in advance, so that that's available for the time of discussion, and on multiple times, you've not done that.
I have.
Please work with me. I'll get you answers, but you've got to ask me the questions before we get here into the meeting.
It is difficult, I guess, to find the time to, one, I have less than seven hours of a business day.
To get the time to figure out how to to work as a council member. It's very difficult.
You're right. All right, let's move on.
I'll say, can we stop arguing? And, I mean, we all have families at home, and this is not getting us anywhere.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and second by Mrs. Beer to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two three. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
I'm staying.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is discussion and action to accept a proposal to obtain a qualified certified public accountant to perform the audit of the financial statements of the city of Alva and its related component units. The we received three proposals. The proposals came from, the firms were HSPG, Russell Williams, and Arlegen Associates. And I have all the proposals here with me. The way the request for proposals was written, it gave us the criteria for scoring them. Treasurer and I scored them on Friday evening. Finance committee looked and discussed that this afternoon, and the highest proposal score was for HSPG at ninety-five, if you add up all the the score from that RFP that I emailed to everybody last Friday. Arlegen Associates was at at ninety-three on the the scoring of that, and that was based on answering those questions and scoring it according to the the numbers that were in the proposal document. Russell and Williams, their score was seventy-eight. Finance committee determined that Russell and Williams really weren't going to be capable of meeting our needs. And then, and actually, I I emailed all of you guys the proposals, didn't I? That's right. So the prices, when we opened the prices, HSPG was twenty thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. The year we just completed. Arlegen Associates was at nineteen thousand two hundred for twenty-one, twenty-two. Russell Williams was at fourteen thousand. And then each of them also had a price for a single audit, which is a requirement if we receive seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal funding, and the single audit price for HSPG was four thousand, the single audit price for Russell Williams was two thousand, the single audit price for Arlegen Associates was five thousand. The finance committee looked at the in the Arlegen Associates as far as reasons why, well, we'll start with Russell Williams. Reasons why they didn't feel Russell Williams were capable. They have essentially three people assigned to their municipal audits. Two of them are father's son. Family emergency could make them essentially unavailable, and their caseload, their number of clients is over over twenty clients.
It's close to thirty.
Close to thirty clients for a three person team. They just didn't have confidence that that group would be able to. And they, we didn't discuss this, but I'll I'll tell you. They came in at about half of the number of hours as the other two firms in terms of how many hours it would take to complete our audit. So we didn't feel like they were going to be able to meet our needs. Between HSPG and Arlegen Associates, both of them come highly recommended by people that we work with. Arlegen Associates has had some recent turnover. HSPG's lead guy is a former Arlegen Associates auditor, CBA. And I I I don't feel like either firm would be a poor choice, but the edge based on scoring and even though they're the most expensive, which if we did the audit and the single audit, the difference is three hundred dollars. But HSPG was the recommendation from finance committee.
I I also independently scored them separate from the mayor and the treasurer. Similar results on on the items that I could. I I obviously couldn't on price and hours, because I didn't have that information, but I had similar results. They, the Arlegen, HSPG were basically neck and neck on that. It really came down to the kind of the turnover being a black mark where there really wasn't any for HSPG, and the cost difference being negligible. So I would make a motion to engage HSPG and Associates for certified public accounting services for the financial statements of the city of Alva and its related component units.
Second.
Have motion by Mr. Winters and second by Mr. Bowman to approve a proposal from HSPG to perform the audit of the financial statements of the city of Alva and its related component units. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item fourteen, discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to A twenty-five O S three oh seven B one to discuss the contract negotiations with IAFF Local thirty-seven E two and Alva, Oklahoma, and B two five O S three oh seven B two to discuss business manager search.
I'll motion to enter into executive session.
My second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and second by Mrs. Beer to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
On business manager search, there's no action, but we are going to be entering into contract negotiations, and so if we are able to come to terms with this individual, we'll make more announcements at that time. Item eighteen is new business. We do not have anything that that would qualify as new business, to my knowledge. Okay? Remarks and inquiries by council members. Taylor, I want to publicly apologize for losing my cool amenities.
Oh, it's fine. It happens. It's honestly, I think, one of the most difficult things here, being able to discuss this publicly and stuff like that. So completely understand.
Have we heard anything on the petition audit?
No, I need to call in. The epic audit's been over for a while.
Yes, that's right.
I think it's over.
Yeah.
It seems like everything's been ruled.
I believe so. I mean, the charges, press, I don't know, or something like that.
Three of them got charged.
That's what, yeah.
I was just going to ask because of the concern. Have you, from my understanding, the last we spoke about the Unstead Pond project, is it in Arizona? I know that you had said we'd ordered something.
We have, the contractor is in Arizona at the moment. He has the liner. We have mutually agreed that we will find another contractor to install the pond liner, and so we need to get the liner back from him and then move forward.
I know this is, this hasn't been brought up at all in time, but that disc golf course at one of the parks.
We're going to move that over to Parks and Recreation. Any other remarks or inquiries from council members? City council meeting is adjourned, and we will open. There's the end of the floor. It's too late. We'll open the Alva Economic Development Authority Meeting, or excuse me, Utility Authority Meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A U A meeting will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the record. They will only be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and item B, approval of claims, any amount of hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred one dollars and twenty-nine cents, and payroll expenses of twenty-six thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The title of the document attached to the finance report is, Council report, do not use this report. For council, I just didn't, we have to make sure it's the right report attached.
I didn't I didn't look at it on the link.
And so I just, I do that sometimes when I'm doing revisions of documents. It's like, this is my first draft. Don't use this one. So.
We can, we can table the approval of claims. If you guys want to pull it out, and we'll get the actual claims report to you. Or we'll at least verify. Or we'll at least verify that that's the claims report.
That, that, yeah, if that works, yeah.
Okay, so we're, so really we.
The one you sent out just says claim report in the email. It says.
That's the total claims report. That's got everything. That's not just the utility authority.
Okay.
We'll just need to remember Heather to get, to verify that and get it on the next agenda also.
So would we not need to take action on item A?
We do.
Of number three.
So.
And then action again on item B, which would be to table it. So there, there should be in the minutes that we tabled it.
Yeah, we would, number four, consider things pulled out of.
Yeah.
So, so we are only going to work on 3A.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item 3A of the consent agenda.
My second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mrs. Beer to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, June 21st, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, item four, consideration and action on items removed from the consent agenda is the approval of claims in the amount of $194,801.29 and payroll expenses of $26,086.64.
I make a motion that we table 3B.
Second. Have a motion by Mrs. Beer and a second by Mr. Winters to table the approval of claims. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, that is all for the utility authority.
We have the same issue on the next one today.
Okay, well, we'll call it word of the economic development. That's the wordy meeting. Please call the roll.
Bowman?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Stelling?
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, June 21st, 2022, approval of claims in the amount of $16,043.84 and payroll expenses of $8,927.3. Same request, take off item B. Wait a minute. I've got it. I just have the toe, never mind. Just the toe.
That was the same that was on the last, that's fine.
Okay, we'll pull B out.
I'll make a motion to approve item 3A.
My second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the minutes of the meeting, June 21st, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, item four, consideration and action on items removed from the consent agenda. So approval of the claims.
Make a motion to table item 3B.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Beer and a second by Mr. Winters to table approval of claims. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. We are adjourned.